January 28, 7 o'clock. Lisa, take attendance.
All board members are present.
Okay, now we will do the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, everyone of the United States of America.
One nation, under God.
Under God.
And justice for all.
We need to go to karaoke or something to get in sync. That was a little rough.
Yeah, that's, we're a lot better when we were live doing it. So with that public comment, Dave, I know two people have joined. We could do those first and I can read the public comment. First one is Megan. Is Megan on the call?
Yes.
Okay. All right, Megan, you have three minutes. Howard, keep, keep time.
I will.
Good evening. I would be remiss to not begin my time expressing my gratitude to each of you and to the former board members for the amount of time and energy that you have spent and will continue to spend serving our community. I know that it truly is a second full-time job and can be thankless at times. You are also one of the most educated boards that I can think of. Your accreditations and accolades should be celebrated and honored. With all of that said, I have watched every single board meeting that has been available over livestream, beginning to end. I watched last spring as some of you begged for guidance from authorities more qualified to make these heart-wrenching decisions about schooling our kids, and I absolutely empathized and agreed. I was frustrated with the lack of leadership and guidelines from the governor, the CDC, Oakland County Health, just about anyone. How could seven laypeople possibly be expected to make such weighty decisions on their own? However, as the weeks and months have ticked by, our experts know much more about COVID and the parameters for best practices to stay as safe as possible. The APA, the CDC, Governor Whitmer, and Dr. Fauci, and plenty of other experts have all said that in-person schooling is possible. In fact, just yesterday, the CDC reported that the risk of transmission is low in schools. The CDC also reported that from last March through October, the proportion of emergency visits related to children's mental health rose dramatically from school-aged kids and adolescents. Lastly, earlier this week, the CDC officials said that schools should resume in-person learning as soon as possible if social distancing and masks are properly enforced. And just today, Dr. Fauci was quoted as saying, "I would back the CDC recommendations because that is really based on data. We need to try to get the children back to school." So as seven laypeople, there is now the authoritative guidance and leadership that you have been waiting for. You can feel confident making decisions based on data and expert opinions instead of your own comfort levels. I believe that each of you wants the best for our kids and that you are exceptionally smart, but I have a hard time believing that any of you has a better understanding of COVID and its transmission than the experts do. I'd like to challenge you to be a board that is known for being problem solvers and not quitters. Get honest about why our kids are not in school full-time and then make it your mission to come up with solutions to those very problems. That kind of growth mindset is what we expect from our kids every day. You need to lead the example. I know from watching your meetings that one of the issues you have is maintaining six feet of space for social distancing. However, the CDC said in September that it's okay if kids are less than six feet apart as long as they are masked. It is then the parents' responsibility to decide if that is a risk they are willing to take, and respectfully, not the school boards. If parents are not comfortable with the spacing of less than six feet, then Bloomfield Virtual is a great option for the family. In closing, I implore you to trust what the experts are saying. Brainstorm some out-of-the-box solutions to problems that you identify and get our kids back to the exceptional education that we have all come to expect from Bloomfield Hills Schools. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thanks, Megan. Is Alan on the line, Dave?
Yes, I am.
Alan?
Thank you, Paul. Yesterday, the middle school teachers had an excellent opportunity to speak with Pat Watson. Today, I'm here on behalf of the Bloomfield Hills Middle School Teachers as a representative of our union. We applaud Pat Watson's candor and willingness to engage in helpful dialogue yesterday during our conversation. At this point, we believe that it might be nice for the public to hear the following. The current hybrid model for the middle schools, while challenging and not perfect, is doing an excellent job in the eyes of the teachers. We get positive feedback daily from students and parents. We are able to manage the smaller groups while simultaneously zooming with our remote students. And while we have classes filling every minute of the day, we have a stop at lunchtime for cleaning our rooms and setting up for the next cohort. During this challenging chapter, we are also working diligently outside of the school day and on weekends to prepare our best possible instruction to meet the needs of both our in-person and our virtual learners. On Wednesdays, we are able to share SEL lessons essential for emotional well-being, meet and work with individual students, meet with parents, have our scheduled meetings, as well as plan with our counterparts. Presently, our counselors are tackling the arduous task of rearranging the schedule for the second semester of our students who now wish to come back in person or who now have elected to go fully remote. While we know that no model is perfect, this model gives us a little bit of everything. Options for middle school families who wish to remain remote, options for half of an in-person day for families who wish for in-person instruction. Thank you for hearing our thoughts and for your continued support of the middle school teachers and staff.
Thanks, Alan. We have now against Mary Ann.
It doesn't look like Mary Ann is here at this time.
Well, maybe we'll come back to her should we put in, so we'll wait till the end on that, maybe.
All right, I'll read, I'll read the public comment. "Please advise as to what the plan is to return full-time face-to-face. The science doesn't support keeping the kids out of school. Both the CDC and Michigan Department of Health support returning to school in-person full-time. I see on a daily basis the emotional impact that these hybrid days and virtual Wednesdays have on my children. If other districts larger than ours can figure it out, why can't we? The emotional impact on these far outweigh the risks of COVID. I would like to remind the board of its mission statement, which is to enable learners to become architects of their future, building on a foundation of scholarship, citizenship, service, and integrity. I would also like to remind the board of our district's Portrait of a Learning Profile, which has been deemed as the guide to which all board members work toward in the betterment of our students and our learning community. Bloomfield Hills School District Portrait of a Learner Profile emphasizes the traits and inquiry about the world, understanding multiple perspectives, engaging in respectful dialogue, the ability to grapple with complexity and taking responsibility, responsible actions. I'd like to ask the board to please be mindful of these guiding principles and make important decisions that impact our community. Bloomfield Hills School District must operate in a fashion that reflects our mission statement. Our impressionable students are watching us. Let's do them right. As parents, students, and community members, we have watched all the private schools in our community successfully open full-time from the beginning of the 2021 school year. As parents, students, and community members, we are now watching. As parents, students, and community, our federal and state government health officials, the CDC, and American Medical Association have called for our children to return to the classroom as soon as possible. It has been proven time and time again with the appropriate measures in place, which our district has clearly demonstrated, the benefits of opening schools outweigh the risks of keeping kids at home in the hybrid model. I urge the board, I urge our board, the voice of our educational community, to revisit its purpose, mission, and guiding principles and do the right thing for our students reopening our school district full-time as soon as possible. Thank you. Please consider full-time school. Please, our kids need it. Please don't deny those families who want it. Good evening, board members and Superintendent Watson. I would like to know what metrics and guidance you will be using to increase our students in-person time. The current hybrid K-8 students need to be increased. As you are aware, along with many other schools who have taken, who have already begun full-day, many Oakland County schools have announced plans for return to five full-days for the next month. What is our plan? We'd like to see an updated proposal, and if this is not the plan, then we are asking for transparency. We are entering the second half of the school year with zero changes to the hybrid schedule. The A-Sinkers have half-days, and Wednesdays continue to be a waste of time. Many people are returning to work, and more children are on their own than ever before. We cannot sit back and continue to allow our younger learners to figure out, figure this out on their own. Their love of school is dwindling, and the mental and physical health is at an all-time low. In a recent study put out by the CDC this week, our thoughts were validated in that the spread of the virus is low in schools. Our children need this more than ever. It has been a year of this, and many families are at their breaking points. Along with the proposal for more updated in-person instruction for the rest of the year, it is also time to begin thinking about what you will do next year. Many of us need to make decisions for the fall because we cannot be left another year of hybrid learning. You created an incredible virtual academy that is thriving. It is now for you to focus on moving forward to provide those of us who chose in-person with the same level of superiority. Please do not let us down. Is that it, Dave?
Paul, Cynthia Von Ditt has joined us.
Okay. Cynthia, welcome back.
She is here, I know.
Hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you, Cynthia.
Okay, so I just wanted to say congratulations to you all at School Board Appreciation Month, and I, you guys have had many meetings. But I did particularly want to call out, I see that on your consent agenda this evening, you are accepting the retirement not only of Brian Goby, who I did say something about the last time I was with you all, but I also wanted to call out tonight the retirement of Adam Scher. I've known Adam for many years, and he's a special guy, a divergent thinker, has been an amazing advocate for kids at our alternative high school, for our finance, fine arts programs, and for cultures of thinking. He's been a tremendous asset to our school district for 30 years, and I just want to say thank you for all the students he has supported throughout those times and all of the staff members who he's listened to and supported in all those different programs.
Thanks, Cynthia.
Mary Ann has not come into the meeting yet, so I think that is it, Paul.
Okay, all right, we'll close that. We will go to board business. Board officer election. We will start with president. Can I have a motion for president?
I move that Lisa Ephros be elected to the position of board president of the Bloomfield Hills Board of Education.
Okay, do we have any discussion?
I have something.
Do we want to, okay, the vote's going in order. Okay, very good. I'll go after Lisa if that's possible.
All right, there's a reason that board officer voting is done by board members only. We are privy to information that the public is not. We know that a board president, like all board members, cannot speak with a lone voice. A president has two main responsibilities that separate her from her role, in her role from other board members. Communication among the board and by the board, and chairing meetings. It is the responsibility of the president to make sure parliamentary procedure is adhered to so that order and civility are maintained and business is accomplished. Superintendent Watson and his administration need to know that I'm here for them. Pat, I know you and your cabinet need a board that respects the work you do and gives you the space to do it. We need a board that understands its role in the governance of the district and leaves the educating of students to professional educators. We are very fortunate to have the best educators in the country, and they should be supported and encouraged, not micromanaged and unilaterally tasked. I will advocate for the students to have the very best educational experience we can offer, and that comes from those with education and experience needed to give it to them. As a board member, I will protect that right for our students and our superintendent in any role that I serve.
Thanks, Lisa. Howard, you had a comment?
Yes, President Cullen, thank you. Tonight, we are being asked to elect the president of our school board, who will lead our board for the next year. But in truth, our entire team of eight are all leaders of this district. The superintendent, Mr. Watson, is the leader of our, is the leader of our over 1,000 employees. He runs the entire $117 million organization. He and his staff make the educational and financial decisions on how the district will be educating our children. The remaining seven of us are the elected Board of Education. We are all elected as trustees, equal in our authority. By ourselves, we have no ability to act unilaterally. Only as a body of seven do we have any power to take action. But annually, we do elect a president. The president is the first among equals. Like other organizations, we delegate to him or her the authority needed to perform the many administrative functions, such as helping to set the meeting agendas, run orderly and congenial board meetings, and deciding which of us will be on which committee and who the committee chairman on those committees will be. But also, like other organizations, the president serves another important function. This person is our leader. That person is expected to assist us in implementing the vision in our strategic plan that the community developed. They work to prioritize the many excellent long-term goals that our district has, helping us to translate those goals into action, which will result in increased achievement for all of our students. The president, like the rest of us, also communicates with the public. We all listen to someone, we all listen to what someone has to say and assist them in the proper way to address any concerns they might have. But we do not have to be passive, listening only to others. We also can be proactive to initiate conversations with members of the public. We all have to remember, though, that none of us, including and especially the president, can make policy or decisions for the board. All of us have our own opinions on what should happen in the future for Bloomfield Hills Schools. We each have every right to communicate those thoughts to the public. What we can't do, though, is indicate or infer that we are speaking for the board when we have those conversations. Over the past two turbulent years, President Paul Cullen has been an excellent leader. He has helped us to navigate through the selection of a new superintendent, the impact of COVID, and a game-changing bond approval. Equally important, he has led us to the point of which we are about to do this next week, which is approve, the approval of aggressive goals for the 2021 calendar year, which will help us set the direction of this district for the next decade. Having him lead us in the next 12 months is critical to permit us to have a full and successful accomplishment of these goals. Any board member has to remember, though, that as president, one cannot go out too far in front of the board on any issue. The board, the president as a leader, must make sure that the, that the other six of us will be, will be willing to follow. Frequent communication by the president to the other board members is critical to make sure that we are all on the same page and that there is general agreement amongst the board members on the direction that the board and the organization are taking. New proposals can be put together by the president or any of us and presented to the board for our approval. But these are only proposals and not the direction of the board until the board has voted to approve them. We must remember, though, that communication needs to go both ways. If any board member is dissatisfied with the way another board member is behaving, those concerns need to be communicated and addressed. If not, resentment can grow and trust is lost. And without trust, it is impossible for any organization to successfully accomplish its mission. I want a proactive board and a proactive president, which truly lead this district. But we always have to temper any proactivity with the fact that we are a team of eight and can only make decisions if we all agree on the path going forward. For these reasons, I will be voting to reelect Paul Cullen as the president of the Bloomfield Hills School Board for the 2021 calendar year.
Howard, any other, any other discussion? Okay, with that, we will call a vote for Lisa to be president in ABC order, starting with Howard.
I hate to be put in this position. I have been trying to avoid this vote for six months. But we are where we are, so I vote no.
Jennifer?
Yes.
John?
No.
Lisa?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
I vote no. Siva?
You're on mute?
I apologize. I vote no.
Okay, motion does not pass. Do we have another motion?
Mr. President, I, let's get my motion here. What, I, let's see, I don't have it in front of me, because I don't, for that sake. I move that we, that Paul Cullen is elected to be the position of president of the Bloomfield Hills Board of Education.
Any discussion? Okay, we'll vote. Howard?
Yes, I'm sorry, discussion.
Okay.
I need to point out that our nominations look different from the officers slated to vote for tonight. I read emails and heard public comments about me. Even though it's 2021, we still don't like an assertive, honest woman who says what she's thinking. We define a good leader, when we define a good leader, we're defining what makes a good male leader. A female with the same traits is subject to criticism. Some of you have daughters, like I do, and they deserve a world that values every ounce of emotion they bring to their work. They deserve to be judged on the content of their words, not the expressions on their face. They deserve a world where they don't have to do all the work behind the scenes while their male counterparts take all the credit. I will show up for them. Election after election, year after year. Hey, we stop assigning acceptable leadership traits that are based on gender. Our students need a hard-working team of seven board trustees, and that's what they'll have. No matter the outcome of this election, we will all work together for the good of the students and the community as a team of eight, who makes decisions collectively, not unilaterally.
Thanks, Lisa. With no other discussion, we'll vote. Howard?
Let, let, let me respond very briefly. My vote has absolutely nothing to do with the sex of the individual. Thank you.
Okay, we'll vote. Howard?
Yes.
Jennifer?
No.
John?
Yes.
Lisa?
No.
Michelle?
I'm sorry, I couldn't, I couldn't get my mic to unmute fast enough to say that I, to respond, so I apologize that I didn't get a chance to make a comment during the comment section. I just wanted to just quickly say that I do hope that as a team of eight, as we, you know, progress through and as a community watching, that we still take into consideration the expressions of gender identification, and sometimes we do come forth with some bias toward women. And so let's try to make sure that as we think about standards, that we hold everyone accountable regardless to their gender identification. And with that being said, I do vote yes in support of whomever shall be our leader. We look forward to working with you.
Thanks, Michelle. Michelle's yes. I'm a yes. Siva?
Yes.
Thanks, motion passes. We will go to vice president. Do I have a motion?
I can motion. I have motion that Jennifer Cook be slated for vice president.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, Howard?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Siva?
Yes.
Motion passes. Can I get a motion for secretary?
I move that John Van Gamert be elected as secretary for the Bloomfield Hills Board of Education.
Okay, any discussion? It will vote. Howard?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Siva?
Yes.
Motion passes. Do I have a motion for treasurer? Okay, I'm a.
I move that.
Want to read the motion?
I move that Howard Barron be elected as treasurer.
Okay, Howard?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Lisa?
No.
Michelle?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Siva?
Yes.
Motion passes. Six one. Okay, we can move on now to COVID update.
Sorry, President Cullen, I, could I say something? I wasn't sure if I should say it, when I should say it, just, okay, thank you. Okay, just, I just have a couple remarks. The election of board officers is an internal organizational event. My vote for president is for complex reasons, which cannot be adequately explained in the course of a few minutes. For the community, know that I think very carefully on this and all matters, and feel free to reach out. But really, no matter, the board, as said before, our board officers have no more power or influence than the rest of the trustees, just more logistical responsibility. None of the board members has any, I repeat, any authority outside of board meetings. We are a team, and for myself and my sense of all of my colleagues, that we are task-oriented and not personality-oriented people. Officer elections is one small event on one day of the year. Every day, we need to do good work that will outlast us. Now Superintendent Watson and the board will move forward with accomplishing the very important work of the district, having clear academic, social, emotional equity and financial goals with their appropriate measures of progress, in accordance, finishing and operating by a robust strategic plan, and fully realizing positive communications and accountability structures that raise quality and value to each other, the district, the community, and obviously, most importantly, for the young people whom we serve. Through this work, we are what we need to be for our students.
Thanks, Jennifer. With that, we will go to Superintendent Watson for COVID data and staffing update.
Thank you, President Cullen. So, good evening, everyone. Welcome to our update on a return to teach and learning for the 2020-21 school year. David, next, two slides, please. So kind of looking where we're at right now as of 1/26/21 in Oakland County when it comes to the vaccine. Total doses so far, 146,500. So we've seen a pretty good increase from the last time we had a report on this. We're starting to see the rollout of the Moderna vaccine a little bit more. Also, based on what the governor said last night, and checking to see what the federal government might able Also, based on what the governor said last night, and checking to see what the federal government might able, might be able to do. It looks like there's a chance for the next three weeks, the state of Michigan's going to get a 16% increase in vaccines. If that holds up and that is accurate, that should open up the door for more people in 1B, in particular our teachers, to get additional shots. We've also been working with Phil Liberty and the BAGA union. As our teachers sign up to go and get the vaccine when the spots are available, we're making sure that there's no constraints for them to be able to go as far as schedule and the time. So if it's during the workday or right before school or right after, we're doing everything we can to make sure they're able to go so that they don't have to worry about finding a certain time, just to sign up for the time that's going to be open. Next slide. Looking at weekly COVID-19 report from Oakland County Health Division. Overall, there are 645 fewer cases in Oakland County when compared to a week ago. Our age group of zero to four and 10 to 13 were pretty much the same within a couple of numbers compared to last week. But all the other trends are continuing to move down in the right direction. Next slide, David. Hospitalization, this is something I get a lot of emails about from parents, why we include it. This is one of the number one factors is hospitalizations and hospital capacity when dealing with COVID. So the trend continues to move in a positive direction. We're seeing fewer patients in critical care, critical care, fewer patients that are on ventilators. And so those are all good signs at the moment. Next slide. So looking on a national level. Can you go back one, David? I guess we skipped one. All right. We're good. Keep it here. So again, looking at Oakland County, looking at the new cases per 100,000. We've had 33 days in orange, and we're getting close to the yellow mark as well. Looking at percent positive, that continues to go down a little bit slower. We've had 36 days in orange. It's good to see both trends continuing down. So we're right about where we were early to mid-October when the COVID numbers were pretty good. Next slide. So looking at where we're at on a national level, we peaked about 250 to 260,000 COVID-19 confirmed cases daily. Right now, we're about 160,000, 170,000 per day range, which is still higher than we, what we would like to be as a nation. But again, looking at that continued trend, that the COVID numbers continue to improve week by week. Next slide. So going back to Oakland County, top right counts by day. Right now, Oakland County is averaging about 200 cases per day. When we had that large spike, some of the numbers were well into 1,200, 1,300 per day. We'll keep track. This is updated now. When this is updated, it's on a little bit of a lag as well. So when you look at, you know, the date at the top for the 28th and you see 49, it's not going to be 49 for the 28th for today. Check back tomorrow, check back the next three days. They've now started accounting for that lag. So understand this can be probably three to four days for the accurate number to be translated onto this website. It also breaks it out a little differently by age group. And then you can see the chart for seven-day average of daily cases. We had the spike in November, December, came back down, went up a little bit again after that. We're continuing that downward spiral right now. Next slide. Thank you. I'll turn it over to you, President Cullen.
Thanks, Pat. Anyone have any questions or comments? Just raise your hand or put, or indicate in the chat. Howard?
Superintendent Watson, obviously, at least the charts are showing some very positive direction. At the same time, and vaccines are starting to roll out, even though very slowly. But again, we have variants that are starting, starting to pop up from South Africa, so we got some good news and bad news. What would it, what will it take? At what point do you think you will be comfortable in recommending to the board that we return to full face-to-face for any of our grades?
Well, let me talk about the variants first, because I know that's something that might be on a lot of people's mind. So there's three, and this is from talking to epidemiologists and then keeping up with the journals. So we know there's three that are currently out there right now. We've got the one that is out of South Africa, which is the B1351. 12/11 today, that was diagnosed for the first time in the United States, in South Carolina, but the belief is, is elsewhere. We've got the B117, which is out of the United Kingdom. We know we have 14 or 13 or 14 cases in Washington County, three or four that were in Wayne County. The belief from the epidemiologist I spoke with this week is that that's going to be the dominant variant in the United States, probably within the next month. We also have the P1 variant, which is going to be the one that came out of Brazil. As of now, we have one person in the US that I know that was diagnosed, that was in Minnesota. And they can't trace it back to travel, so they're not sure. Again, there are probably other cases out there. President Cullen, you were going to say something?
No, I wasn't going to say anything.
Okay. And the other question, trustee Baron, we'll be meeting again next week, preparing a further update. If you remember when I gave the presentation on January 7th, I said step one was a safe return to everyone coming back. As of Monday, BHHS returns. At that point, we'll, we will return all of our students pre-K through 26 to in-person learning. And then I'll prepare a next step and have an update when we meet again.
Thanks, Pat. Any other questions or comments? Okay, okay, with that, we'll move on. I just have a brief president report. So I want to say, I want to say that I'm looking forward to supporting and working together with our new board in the upcoming year. I know we've had a few meetings, we have a few meetings ahead of us. But we have had a couple of really productive meetings, setting a great tone for the year ahead. Last two days, most of us on the board attended workshops on some of the great work our district is involved in. I'm also amazed at all the efforts our community and especially our students are doing to help all of us navigate through these tough times. Whether it's food drives, pet supply drives, tutoring, or just writing letters to our elders, they have been tremendous. I have also had the privilege the last couple of days of attending various student-led meetings with our superintendent, along with some of my colleagues on the board. And as one, and as one of my colleagues put it, it was one of the most informative meetings we have attended. The students praised their teachers and offered constructive feedback and were very appreciative that we listened to them. I am so looking forward to working with all my colleagues as a team of eight on the board. All of us have so much individually to offer. I look forward to a great year ahead. With that, Pat, superintendent report?
Thank you, President Cullen. It's been a busy start to the year, and I would say that's definitely an understatement. I really enjoyed my one-on-one meetings with all the board members this week. Had a chance to share different things with different people. For our new board members, I got to learn a lot about you. I think I kind of threw Siva over the end last night, sharing things that, you know, with my background, that I haven't had a chance to share with everyone else and, you know, kind of that after-school special type story. Also had an opportunity with our district administrators this week and talk about what next steps might look like as far as where we're at with our hybrid model and what any additions or deletions we might have as we continue to look, tweak, and grow. And then also meeting with all the teaching staff this week. One of the things I really love about meeting with the teaching staff is that they're always very honest and they're very open. I think a lot of times you can get in a situation where people may not feel comfortable asking questions or safe to ask questions. I feel like the teachers I've met with so far this week, and I met with every group except for our special educators, and I'll meet with them tomorrow. I would say most feel very honest, or at least they were able to share the questions with Phil ahead of time and in a spreadsheet, so their questions got asked and answered. And it's something I really enjoy doing, and I did it last spring as well. And I think it's something that Phil and I will continue to work together that will leave open for our staff so that they can get their questions answered from me on the spot, and it's just a good thing. Also had a chance to visit every building except for one this week and kind of see our staff back in action, see the kids back in action. It was incredibly enjoyable, the dialogue and seeing just when their cheekbones smile underneath the mask, that they're excited to be back in school. And just our staff's doing a wonderful job. I know I share with the staff, you know, it might be meaningless that, you know, I think they're doing a great job. Or again, I've said a million times, they've gone above and beyond, and they truly have. I wish there was more we could do for all teachers in the state of Michigan or what they've been able to do this year and the heavy lift they've made in just going above and beyond those expectations. It just proves what good people we have in our district and the care that they have for our children. I've also continued my meetings with parents and students one-on-one or in small groups, depending on whether it's parents or students that need some additional support or the students that just want to share things that are going on. I know a couple of you had a chance to really, you know, enjoy being part of that process and just meet some of the students and hear what they have to say, and that's been enjoyable. I'm also looking forward to visiting Bloomfield Virtual classrooms in early February. So I'll be popping in on classes and kind of showing up virtually, because it is Bloomfield Virtual, so looking forward to that. And we're also building our new team. We know we have some retirees and some resignations, and we've got three new administrative appointments tonight. And we're going to have a couple more to follow in the near future. So I'm looking forward to kind of taking our team and adding to it and creating a new team and kind of moving forward. Thank you. President Cullen, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thanks, Pat. With that, we will go to administrative appointments. Todd?
Thank you, Paul. Good evening, trustees. I have the distinct pleasure of introducing you to one of our newest associate principals, Melissa Palmieri. Is Melissa on screen? She's not on my screen. Can you see her?
She's, she's here. She just needs to turn on her video.
There we go. There she is. So Melissa went through a rather extensive interview process, and we are very excited to be bringing her to Bloomfield Hills. Melissa spent some time as a teacher at the International Academy at the East Campus, where she mostly taught social studies, history, economics, and student leadership in the IB program. Before that, she taught at various grade levels, mostly between grade six and 12 in the Avondale School District. And she has also served as a summer school principal in Troy and successfully completed the Oakland Schools Aspiring Principals Academy. Melissa has been engaged in numerous professional development opportunities and educational priorities that include exploring social justice through restorative practices, trauma-informed schools, restorative circles, effective strategies for educating African-American males, restorative conferences, and culturally responsive teaching. So Melissa, welcome to Bloomfield Hills. It's very exciting to have you aboard. And the one thing I didn't have in my notes, and I'm so sorry, Melissa, you can, you can go ahead and jump in and tell everyone, I didn't have your degree in front of me. I lost that in my notes. So you're going to have to tell us what university you come from. I'm afraid I have not retained that information.
Yeah, my undergrad was at Grand Valley, and I got ABS in social studies. And then my master's was from Saginaw Valley for principalship.
Thank you, Melissa. I have looked at quite a few resumes this month, so you'll have to, I apologize for not remembering your degree, so.
No.
Or Ed, I introduce you to Melissa.
Thanks, Todd. Do I have a motion? I'm sorry, do I have a motion?
I move that Melissa Palmieri be appointed Associate Principal for West Hills Middle School, effective on January 25th, 2021.
Have support?
Support.
Okay, any discussion, any comments before we vote? With that, Howard?
Yes.
Jennifer? Go back to Jennifer. We lost her, or she's on mute. Technology. John?
This might be an abstain moment for me. My wife teaches at the school, the Associate Principal does the teacher evaluations, and my wife is on the interview committee, so I'll just abstain this one. Thanks.
Lisa?
Yes, welcome, Melissa.
Michelle? Michelle?
Welcome, Melissa. My vote is a yes.
I'm a yes. Siva?
I'm a yes. Welcome, Melissa. I think Jennifer's back.
Jennifer?
Sorry about that. I thought I was on. Yes, welcome aboard, Melissa.
Great, motion passes. Melissa, you want to say a few words to our community? Congratulations, Melissa.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Really, I just wanted to express my gratitude. I have been able to be at West Hills Middle School now for four days, and in that short amount of time, the word that comes to mind is, is team. Andy Geniak has been awesome and really brought me in right away. And the other middle school administrators as well have just kind of had open arms towards me, and I'm just so thankful. And, you know, the other piece to that is, in these four days, it's clear how special this community is. And I feel very fortunate to be a part of it and grow with it as well. And I think the last thing that I will say is that I'm really excited in this new role, specifically because as a classroom teacher, something that I've really pushed towards and gone on a journey towards is to provide equity inclusion for all of our students. And I'm excited to see how I can utilize this role to continue to try to provide those opportunities for all students. So thank you again. I really appreciate it, and I'm really looking forward to this journey with you all.
Great, thanks, Melissa. With that, I will go to Superintendent Watson.
Thank you, President Cullen. Keith, can you turn on your camera? There he is. So I am excited to announce that Keith McDonald will be joining Bloomfield Hill Schools as Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources and Title IX Coordinator, beginning February 15th, 2021. Mr. McDonald comes to us with a wealth of experience in education, serving in Livonia Public Schools as a science and physical, physical education teacher, an assistant principal, a principal, and as, and as Director of Human Resources over the course of the past 20 years. Mr. McDonald also has experience as an adjunct professor at Madonna University, teaching courses on educational leadership with degrees from Wayne State University, Mary Grove College, and the University of Michigan Ann Arbor. Keith McDonald has experience and the education to lead our human resource department with wisdom and expertise. Mr. McDonald brings many valuable leadership skills to the role of Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources and Title IX Coordinator. An example of this leadership is the work that he put in while the Human Resource Director at Livonia Public Schools, working with a large group of teachers to recommend and reconstruct the student growth portion of the teacher evaluation system. The results of this work led to the Department, Michigan Department of Education, using this model as an exemplar for other districts across the state of Michigan. Another example is the extensive work Keith has done in Livonia as part of their $2 million bond and making sure that was implemented properly. We look forward to working with Keith McDonald as a new member of the Bloomfield Hill Schools team.
Thanks, Pat. Can I get a motion?
Sure, I can. I move Keith McDonald be appointed as Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources and Title IX Coordinator with an effective date of February 15th, 2021.
I get support? Anyone else supported?
Support.
Okay.
It's mute delay. It's not like, you know, it's not a goodwill delay.
The technology, we could blame, we could blame the technology. We'll vote. Howard?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes, welcome aboard, Keith. Welcome to Bloomfield.
Jonathan?
Yes, welcome, Keith, and welcome, Melissa, as well. I didn't want to make it sound like I
Lisa?
Yes, welcome, Keith.
Michelle?
My vote is a yes. Welcome, Keith.
I'm a yes. Siva?
Yes, welcome, Keith.
Motion pass. Yeah, motion passes. Keith, would you like to say a few words to our community? Congratulations, Keith.
Thank you, thank you, board. First, I just want to thank, thank the board for showing me a vote of confidence and approving my appointment. My intent is that you will quickly look back at this time and say, you know, we made a great decision for Bloomfield Hill Schools. To Pat, thank you for giving me the opportunity to join your leadership team. I'm thrilled to be working with you and partner with you on building more for the students and staff and the community of Bloomfield Hills. Also can't wait. I've got an opportunity to meet a few of the HR team, and they are all just wonderful, and I can't wait to get down and working with each one of them. and, and working with each one of them. Uh, I'm absolutely thrilled to be joining this district and appreciate the many folks who have already taken the opportunity to reach out to me. Um, it's been so, so welcoming over the last couple of weeks. It's, uh, been absolutely amazing. You know, I spent 20 years in Livonia, um, have some very strong relationships there, great friends, great colleagues, uh, great leaders that I've had an opportunity to learn from, and I'll be bringing that experience with me uh, as I start here on the 15th. Um, I'm still happy to leave a lot of those, but I'm real excited to build those same strong relationships here with the great people of BHS. Um, and so while I have the floor, um, I guess it's probably more appropriate to say while I have the screen, um, I would just want to thank my wonderful wife Tara uh, and my two children, William and Ashley. Um, it's actually Tara who introduced Pat and I about eight years ago when we were both principals. So we have her to thank for all this. Uh, and I, I know you have a lot of business tonight, so I don't want to take up a lot of your time, but, um, I look forward to having the opportunity to get to know each of you as well, um, and partnering with you on, uh, doing great things for our students. So, thank you.
Great, thank you, Keith, and congratulations again. With that, Pat, um, we'll go to C.
Great, thank you, President Cohen. Uh, Karen, if I can find you, there you are on my screen. Go ahead and turn on your camera. Now you moved, there we are. I'm excited to announce Karen Huyi will be joining Bloomfield Hill Schools as our new Director of Communication. Karen earned an MA in Communication and Social Justice from the University of Windsor, and an Honors BA in Media, Information, and Techno Culture from the University of Western Ontario. She has undergone extensive professional development in marketing, communication, and business at institutions like Wayne State University and Harvard. For the past six years, she has overseen the strategic development and daily operations of the marketing, communications, and health promotion efforts at the Campus Health Center at Wayne State University. Karen sat on the Mid-American College Health Association Board of Directors for six years, served on several committees for federal and state grants, and presented at numerous regional and national conferences. She was acknowledged with a special, uh, tribute from the state of Michigan, honoring the historic role she played in passing House Bill 4325. We look forward to working with Karen Huyi as a new member of our Bloomfield Hill Schools team.
Thanks, Pat. Uh, can I get a motion?
Hi, Ken. I move that Karen Huyi be, uh, appointed as Director of Communication Services with an effective date of February 15th, 2021.
I get support?
Support.
Okay, we'll vote. Um, Howard?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes, welcome, Karen.
Jonathan?
Yes, welcome, Karen.
Lisa?
Yes, welcome to Bloomfield, Karen.
Michelle?
Yes, welcome to Bloomfield, Karen. Welcome.
I'm a yes. Siva?
Yes, welcome, Karen.
Congratulations, Karen. Uh, would you like to say a few words to the community?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you all for taking the time to appoint me this evening. Um, I really look forward to getting to know you all in the coming weeks and months. Um, thank you to Pat and everyone else who was involved in the interview process. I got to know a wide number of people on the, on the team, and it was a real pleasure. Um, I'm thrilled to be joining the Bloomfield Hill Schools community. I've already received such a warm welcome from so many people, um, from HR and communications and IT. Um, and I'm just so grateful to be joining such a talented and energetic group of people, um, and serving our families and community. So thank you so much, and I look forward to working with you in the coming weeks.
Thank you, Karen. Thank you very much, and congratulations to our three appointees today. Uh, before we go to consent, I think, I'm sorry, Howard?
Yeah, point of personal privilege, Mr. President?
Yes.
Um, can I make a request of our esteemed superintendent? Uh, considering that we are in a virtual world and, um, really will not be going down to Doyle, uh, very frequently, is it possible for him to facilitate, uh, meetings with some of these new individuals so that we, the board members, get to, uh, to know them on a personal basis?
Trustee, that's something we can look at scheduling once they actually start, and let's give them a couple, you know, a little bit of time to actually get their feet wet and get, you know, get going. We've got a lot of catching up to do.
Absolutely, but normally we would, uh, you know, in between committee meetings or over dinner, we would, uh, get to, uh, get to know people. But, um, I don't know with a, in a virtual world, it, it might be more difficult. So if you could facilitate, that would be greatly appreciated at some point when it's convenient. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, Howard. Before we go to consent, um, I think we passed over, um, Superintendent Watson. Uh, I think you wanted to give a staffing update under four, so I'm just going to go back and you can give a staffing update.
Yes, thank you, President Cohen. It will be brief. So just an update on staffing so everyone knows where we're at. Uh, next slide, please, David. So as of today, we have 182 that are recovered or returned. Uh, we have seven active staff members that are out for Epsilon. We currently have 20 that are quarantined and 24 active FM LA. Our substitute pool fill rate last year at this time was 90%. Right now it's at 86%. The good news is that's actually an increase. It's an 8% increase from 1.7. So I'm beyond excited to see that increase. So hopefully we can keep marketing and get a few more subs in as well. Next slide. Speaking of subs, just a reminder, we've increased the daily rate from 105 to 130. Uh, you need at least 60 college credits. Uh, you can apply by going to www.edustaff.org. And keep in mind, if you are working with children, um, you are now part of the 1B vaccination group. So that could get you literally the vaccines, uh, vaccines sooner. So another benefit, if you're somebody that wants the vaccine, sign up to be a substitute teacher. We definitely need you. The kids need you, and I'll turn it back over to you. Thanks, President Cohen.
Thanks, uh, Pat. Uh, with that, we will go to consent agenda. Lisa?
Mr. President?
You know what? I'm going to defer to the new secretary for this.
Okay, Jonathan?
I'm sorry, I got distracted. What was the question?
Yeah. Uh, Jonathan, on since you're the new secretary, Lisa deferred. If you could just read the consent agenda under eight, just kind of read.
Oh, sure, of course.
That's it, that's it. And then, and then we'll pause for a second before we vote on it just because of some HR actions that some of our board members want to make some comments, John.
I apologize to everyone. I, uh, spring soccer is starting up, and I had to return the text that I shouldn't have done during the meeting, but I'll, I'll read this off. So the consent agenda, um, I move the Board of Education approve the recommended recommendations detailed in the consent, in the consent agenda as follows. Request to approve minutes from the regular meeting of December 17, 2020. Request to approve minutes from a special meeting of January 7, 2021. Request to approve minutes from special meeting, Board Workshop of January 12, 2021. Request to approve minutes from the study session of January 14, 2021. Maybe I should be reading these letters. F, request to approve minutes from a special meeting and closed session of January 19, 2021. G, request to approve monthly finance, financial reports. Tina Kastig, Assistant Superintendent Finance and Operations. I move the Board of Education approve the financial reports as presented. H, request to approve dispersment reports. Tina Kastig, Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations. I move the Board of Education approve the dispersment reports as presented. I request to approve purchase of a large area rotary mower. Uh, so Brian Goby, Director of Physical Plant Services. I move the Board of Education approve the purchase of a Toro, Toro Grandmaster 4000D in the amount of $67,998.34 from Spartan Distributors funded by the Capital Equipment Fund. J, request to approve Loser selective demo, demolition, electrical demolition. Uh, that's Brian Goby as well, Director of Physical Plant Services. I move the Board of Education approve bid number 024116, selective demolition and to industrial demolition services in the amount of $396 and bid 26, number 260000, electrical demolition to Dehant Electric in the amount of $46,345 with the addition of contingency in the amount of $46,345. The total award amount is $509,795 funded by the 2020 Bond Fund. And K, request to approve HR actions. Karen Healy, Director of Human Resources. I move that the Board of Education approve personnel actions as presented.
Thanks, um, before, yeah, I guess, um, either before or after we vote on it, uh, two of the things in the HR actions, I know some of our board colleagues may want to comment on, is, uh, Brian Goby, um, who will be obviously resigning from the district, and Adam Shear. Does any of my colleagues would like to, um, say a few words? Uh, Lisa, you want to start it off?
Okay, um, I just want to say, uh, to everyone that's leaving that you'll be missed. Um, Brian, I might be the only board member that was here when you started, uh, and I can remember distinctly, um, a couple of ways that you went way out of your way from the beginning. Uh, we had some playground projects at Conit, and, um, I was trying to figure out who to get in touch with to figure out how to do the wood chips, believe it or not. And, um, before I could even get to the, to the right person, they, you had already taken care of it. Um, incidentally, the, uh, the following spring, you emailed to let me know that you found an Afro shoe at the bottom of one of those wood chip piles, but you promised you would never tell anyone. So, um, I, I also want to say, what, one of the highlights, um, for me was getting to tour the buildings with you when we were, um, showing them to superintendent candidates. You, uh, hearing your rendition and all of the work and effort that you put into every nook and cranny in every building, um, being with you and, and seeing people, uh, running up to you and asking you where the light bulbs were. There was no question you couldn't answer, no part of the building that you didn't know, no person in any building that you didn't know the first and last name of. And, uh, you know, it, it's been a great 14 years. Thank you so much for all that you did behind the scenes. Um, and we're really going to miss you. Uh, although lucky to be able to have you working, um, alongside us in a different capacity. Also, um, you know, if we have a snow day officially before your last day, you still owe me that bucket list snow day run.
Thanks, Lisa. Anyone else want to make any comments? Howard?
So, um, Mr. Shear, um, I don't have the history that Cynthia has with you, but, uh, you and I always bump into each other every so often throughout the year and, um, always have a wonderful, wonderful intellectual conversation. It is a real, uh, going to be a real loss to Wei and the district that you will be leaving us. Uh, good luck to you in your retirement. Uh, you deserve it, uh, but you will be sorely missed. And Mr. Goby, um, I'm sure you will not miss the four o'clock, uh, drives around the district in the morning on snow days to, um, help the superintendent determine whether we are going to call a snow day or not. Brian knows every square inch of this district, um, and has worked tirelessly to keep us, uh, maintained and, um, on a, as best we could on the forefront of, uh, technology. Um, he was the main impetus behind, behind the, uh, the bond in putting it together with Barton Mallow. And, um, we are, again, forever in your debt, in our debt, to, uh, to have you, uh, assist us in, in the, um, the first bond for and now, um, in the second bond. So thank you, thank you, thank you, Brian Goby. Um, we'll miss your jokes, we'll miss your smart aleck comments, but you, again, similar to, uh, Mr. Shear, will be sorely missed.
Thanks, Howard. Uh, Jennifer?
Yeah, I'll be really brief. I'm newer on the scene and didn't get to know either of you as well as I would have liked, but I certainly have a, a broad appreciation through others for how well and how diligently you've served the district. So I want to thank both of you. I also wanted to add, um, Superintendent Watson, this is your grand opportunity to become, to have the Twitter lead in this district because, um, Mr. Goby has enjoyed the privilege these many years of having the most Twitter followers of anybody in Bloomfield Hill Schools because the students all know that that's their first line on a snow day. So maybe now with the champion leaving, you, you can sneak up there. Thank you both very much, Brian and Adam. Good health to you and enjoy your next step.
Thanks, Jennifer. Yeah, I'm going to say a few comments. First about Brian, um, yeah, Jennifer, to your, your point, um, I know all the students were always at their edge waiting for the snowman to come out. If the snowman came out, then they had a snow day. So that was probably the most popular thing from a student perspective they looked at at Twitter. And then Lisa, to your point, I think I was part of you, you know, if you have, if no one's ever gotten a tour of the building from Brian Goby, you know, in all of his history going, building the building, you know, you need to experience it. It's a once in a lifetime. And yeah, all the jokes, and I remember, uh, when we had Strategic Plan, when Brian came up, you know, would make his comments, you know, the room, you know, laughed, it was enlightened, and whatever tension there was went away when Brian spoke. He just spoke from, you know, the heart, spoke, you know, what came to mind, and he, he's been a great asset to the district, not going very far. We'll be seeing a lot more of him. Now, Adam Shear, Adam Shear, um, is prob, is, well, one of the reasons why, you know, we, we ended up, me and my family ended up in Bloomfield. Um, as we were touring a decade ago, I know, um, Adam gave my wife, um, and I'm sure he's given hundreds of people, you know, the, you know, the tour of Wei, uh, and, you know, in terms of telling us about visible thinking, what he does, uh, sort of, you know, hi- his building. And he, he sold my wife within a half hour, and after the hour and a half, you know, tour, she basically said, we have to live in this little area so we can go to Wei Elementary School, which I know he's done for hundreds and hundreds of families, and I know he's an icon at Wei. All the work, like Cynthia said, that he did prior to Wei with Bowers and the alternative school, he's a, he's an icon in, in our community, and he will be sorely missed as well. So again, thank you, uh, both Brian and Adam for everything you've done for our district. With that, um, we have, uh, consent to vote on consent. So we will go to.
I just wanted to also say thank you for their service real quick. Just, just wanted to thank them for their service.
Howard?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Siva?
Yes.
A consent passes. With that, we will go to, I think, for, uh, FFLA report, or reports. Okay, I will start off, um, giving the latest FFLA report. So as the Bond Oversight Committee, the Bond Program was discussed, focusing on the upcoming, upcoming bid packages for Loser Selective Demo and a booth pilot room. The latest budget to actual reports were also provided. Uh, an overview of the key points related to the relocation of transportation and maintenance was provided. Additional bond updates, including design progress, was provided at the study session that followed the FFLA meeting. Administration shared the latest sinking fund projects for this spring and the summer. Spending is projected at almost $900,000, which Rob getting renovations, and, um, West Hills Middle School storm water eliminated still open to add to that list. The LED site lighting at Rob was also completed. Administration also shared their current bus replacement program that included a 12-year lifecycle, replacing five buses annually on average, which may be, which may vary depending the year, mileage, and conditions of the bus needing replacing. The district participates in the Michigan School Business Off, Officials Bus Purchasing Program that brings competitive pricing. Bloomfield Hill Schools provides itself on 29 years of perfect Michigan State Police School Bus inspections. School Bus inspections, as well, as that was told to us during the meeting. Administration and Plant, Marine, and Crestor shared an update on the catchment area work, including the four elementary school enrollments, demonstrating the need to rebalance the populations. Based on the latest enrollment data and trends, it's expected that BHS enrollment will be stable going forward. The owner representative services proposal was shared with FFLA. FFLA members shared their expectations of the role to help with the administration's evaluations. All agreed in the final recommendation would occur after the new director of Physical Plant Services had identified, since that individual would work closely with the owner representative. The board treasurer shared proposed goals, requesting FFLA's recommendations to the full board. Two or three goals moved forward for the board's consideration. Other matters that are on the agenda that were briefly discussed includes proposed new scope and design committees related to the bond, questions related to strategic plan goals, and staff mileage reimbursement methods. That's my FFLA update. Any comments or questions?
President, or Chairman, can I make a comment?
Yeah.
I just wanted to amend one thing that you said, or add an additional comment related to the bus purchases.
Yep.
We typically purchase about five to six buses a year on a, as Paul said, I think on a 13-year cycle. Because of COVID this year, we have not been putting the miles on the buses that we typically would. So therefore, Director Goby, who manages the bus fleet, recommended that this year we do not purchase any buses, because they have not hit the mileage limits that they would have typically because of COVID. So therefore, we're getting kind of a buy year on bus purchases, and we'll pick it up again in the fall of next year, when we hit the next year of, on this 13-year, or now for that, you know, for this group, it would be a 14-year cycle.
Thanks, Howard. With that, we will go to the Board Policy Committee. Lisa?
Okay. The Policy Committee has finished the first draft of the Board Operating Procedures, emailed it to all board members, and we will set a time pending or finishing some of our governance work with Doug Eadie. We will find a time to go over the Board Operating Procedures as a full board, taking recommendations for edits and come up, I'm sure, with what will be the next of several drafts.
Thanks, Lisa. Any comments? Howard?
Yeah. I reviewed the, I mean, Lisa, Jennifer, and I were part, were that committee that we've been working with Pat and Kelly, who is our prior HR director on this. Some of the discussions that were brought up in that meeting somehow did not end up getting into the draft that the rest of the board saw. So when we meet and go over it as a board, I'll be bringing up a few of those items. Some of them, you know, Lisa might have already been incorporating, some I might add after, you know, at the meeting. And also, there was one issue that the board or the committee voted two to one to not include, and I was the one who wanted to remove a certain section. So we will be discussing that when we have our full board meeting, or study session to go over it.
Thanks, Howard. Anything else? Okay, we will go to Oakland County School Board Association update. Lisa?
Okay. I just wanted to let, I think our new board members have already been to at least one meeting, but let everybody know that the Oakland County School Board Association is an organization made up of all board members of all boards in Oakland County, and they provide wonderful resources, especially during COVID, for collaboration, idea sharing, so that we can hear what other boards are doing successfully, unsuccessfully. It's really nice to hear some things that have been tried, some things that work, some ideas that haven't worked. They are also providing a number of workshops, including a presentation next month on board and they provide mentors, too. Some of the mentors that they have available, all are outstanding, speaking of personal experience as well, longtime board members with lots of experience, just another, another resource for all of us. But, you know, as we have pertinent discussions about COVID or related issues, when something has been tried or comes up that's relevant, I'll work it into the conversation at that point, but just a wonderful resource for board members, especially looking for collaboration and, you know, examples of real-life things that have worked and haven't worked. So, Mary Port?
Thanks, Lisa. Any comments? Okay, we will go to Jennifer, Oakland County Health Division update.
Hi, I did have a comment, but I couldn't unmute fast enough, so this is fortuitous. Yeah, I just, I think we just got the email about mentors, and I just, if I read it correctly, one does not have to be a new board member in order to ask for mentorship, so they are just a terrific resource. Okay, so for everyone who is not aware, the, since several months now, the Oakland County Health Department has had every other week meetings with any board member from Oakland County, and so it's purely informational. They typically spend, these are half-hour meetings, they typically spend the first few minutes going over the weekly report. That's the graph that Superintendent Watson showed us a few minutes ago with the up-down and sideways arrows to see what the latest data trends are, and then the rest of the meeting is just open for any questions that anyone might have. So there wasn't a tremendous, the next meeting is this coming Wednesday, so 10 days ago at the last meeting, there wasn't a tremendous amount of new information. I think the biggest thing they covered is that the county will no longer be using the A through E system. I think it just was, was not really fitting with practical circumstances. There were certain, there were certain, there was so much data in that rubric that certain things, like we had such
We lost, we lost her, but I guess when she comes back, if there's anything else she needed to do, you know, she can report out.
Paul, if I, while she's away, could I just add something?
Sure.
Um, there is currently some legislation that's been proposed in Lansing to take the responsibility for determining whether schools open or close away from, or recommendations for school closing and opening, away from the state health department and allocating it down to the county health departments. So if that actually is passed into law, that would give Oakland County Health Department a lot more authority over, over our well-being as a school district than they've had in the past. So as people say, watch this space.
Okay, thanks, Howard. With that, we will go to E, School Start Times Learning LST Presentation. Superintendent Watson?
Thank you, President.
Am I back?
Oh, sorry, Jennifer?
Yeah, can you guys hear me?
Yeah, we can, we can.
Okay, sorry. Do you mind if I just take a second? This is really quick.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so basically, the last message from the Health Department is that all educators, you know, the, it's probably common knowledge by now, oakgov.com/vaccine, and you just click on the link that says save your spot, and the appointments are being administered for vaccines through, through the Health Department. Thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer. With that, Superintendent Watson?
Thank you, President. So we're going to talk a little bit about school start times. So, next slide, please. So, we issued a survey not too long ago, and just want to share some of the sample questions. So these are sample student questions. Do you usually feel alert and awake when you arrive at school on a typical in-person school day? We're looking at prior to schedule changes related to COVID-19. During a normal in-person school year, middle school begins at 8:15 a.m. You think that is too early, too late, just right? What times of the high school day do you like best? Again, trying to get some baseline data. Next slide. Some sample staff questions. Do the majority of your students appear to be alert and ready to learn at the beginning of the school day on a typical in-person school day? BHS, BHHS high school students start their day at 7:25 for regular in-person learning. Do you think high school students would benefit if the schools started later? How would a later start time for high school impact your family's schedule? Think back to the questions you answered in the survey. What was the top factor that most influenced your choices? Again, some of the sample questions. Next slide, just a couple of the sample parent guardian questions. How much sleep do you think children ages 11 to 18-year-olds need each night to stay healthy? When reviewing the table above, how would I change to shift one, shift two, or flip and pack your childcare arrangements? We'll look at that table in a minute. And think back on the questions you answered in the survey regarding school start times. Select the top factor that most influenced your choices. So, next slide. Again, the goal was to start having the conversation about school start times for elementary, middle, high school. What is the best time to have our students go to school? And so the first survey, this is the first survey we sent out, looking at the current times, our high school runs from 7:25 to 2:30. Our middle school is from 8:15 to 3:05. Elementary is from 9:05 to 3:55. So shift one was looking at a high school start time at 7:55 and ending at 3:00. Middle school at 8:45 to 3:35. Elementary, 9:35 to 4:25. The start and end of each school day 30 minutes later. Our bus routes to and from school will remain about one hour total. Shift number two would be using community bus stops, which creates shorter bus routes. So a high school day starting at 7:55, ending at 3:00. Middle school starting at 8:45, ending at 3:35. Elementary, 9:15 to 4:05. We would start and end each school day 30 minutes later. Fewer bus stops would allow elementary schools to start and end earlier. It also allows the time between runs to be cut down a little bit. And then a flip, so high school starting at 8:30 in the morning, ending at 3:20. Middle school at 7:40, ending at 2:45. And elementary, beginning at 9:15 and ending at 4:05. So middle school would have the earliest start and end to the day, followed by high school. Elementary would start 10 minutes later than their current day. Next slide. So next steps, we're looking at some additional transportation scenarios, looking at the possibility, what would it look like if we could combine runs for middle school and high school? That's one of the steps we're looking at right now. Also looking to gather feedback from the Board of Education today. Obviously, there are tons of things that we could have added and sent out. Again, we were trying to get that baseline data and just get the conversation, get everything started. So there are probably going to be things you would like to see added and more information that can be brought to the table. It's not that we sat down and said, all right, what are the things we want to leave out? We wanted to make sure we got the car off the assembly line, knowing that we'd have to add things when we report. And then also, our board instructional team will be meeting to discuss the survey results and items on Monday on 2/1/21, and will also be sharing the results with the community, so the community can see it on the website and see all the data from it as well. Next slide, please. Thank you. I'll turn back to you, President.
Thanks, Pat. So just raise your hand if you want to, you have questions or comments, Jennifer, then Lisa, and then, or just put a question mark in the chat. So Jennifer, Lisa, then Howard.
Yeah, just to let those of you who are not going to be at BIC on Monday, John, Paul, Howard, and Lisa, if you have specific questions or topics, please send them over to me, so that I can make sure that we get all the board inquiries covered at that meeting.
Thanks, Jennifer. Lisa?
Okay, thanks. So, I don't know if we can go to the second to last slide where there was the puzzle pieces?
Oh, sure.
Well, I want that one, too, but let me ask the one about the puzzle pieces first.
Oh, sorry.
In the middle one is
Go forward, please.
Yeah, that's it. Okay. So gather board feedback. My understanding from our last meeting was that three board members, well, four, because Paul, all right, four board members listed board goals, and on those goals was the, taking the American Academy of Pediatrics and CDC recommendations for start times. Why weren't those considered in the survey that was sent out, and why, in terms of the choices, are we not even having an option of elementary starting earlier? Also, not necessarily that elementary has to start earlier, but my question is, you know, CDC and American Academy of Pediatrics and American Psychological Academy all say that middle and high school should start at 8:30 a.m. or later. So not even, let's leave elementary aside, because they don't necessarily have to start earlier, but why are, why are none of those recommendations even an option? And, you know, I appreciate gathering board feedback, but it seems like the board has given that feedback already.
Well, one of the options was the 8:30 start, and I know when we met on the 19th, we worked on our district goals, and we haven't approved them yet. If the district goal is that we're going to move to the American Academy of Pediatrics recommendation and the CDC recommendation, then that's definitely what we're going to do, then there's no more discussion. And we knew this wasn't going to be all encompassing and have, I mean, we could have listed literally 500, literally 500 scenarios. It was to kind of make sure we got it started, started the conversation. This is not a finished product. There's not a proposal, there's not a vote, there's not a recommendation. So again, it wasn't intentionally like, we're just going to leave like 15 things out, we just don't want to talk about. It's getting that baseline data, having that further conversation. We started it, we'll have it again at BIC, we can continue to gather more information. We also meet, I want to say Monday, to talk about goals again, and if that's one of the approved district goals, and the board says, all right, one of our district goals is we're going to implement the American Academy of Pediatrics and CDC recommendations, and it's not just high school, it's also middle school, right? So it's middle school and high school. Then it will be a conversation, okay, if that's what our district goal is going to be, how are we going to accomplish that if we need, for example, three runs? They both couldn't go at the same time unless we could buy enough buses and then hire enough drivers to do them at the same time. But again, that's a different conversation. It might have to be, well, we'll prove the goal for middle school, or we'll prove it for the high school. So again, this decision, you know, a finished product, that was not the intent. The intent was, this is something that, when I got here, that everyone wanted to review, and I know I talked to several people, and I said, okay, we're going to pick it back up in January of 2021. We're going to continue to look at it, and then there'll be a recommendation of what's going to happen. So following through on what I said I was going to do, and that's what we're doing here tonight.
Okay. Well, I just, just for purposes of, you know, the middle puzzle piece, the four board members that presented the district goals, it wasn't even mine, but I liked it, because in my opinion, if we're going to change start times, why wouldn't we take the CDC recommendation?
Right. Now, happy, you know, happy to further, you know, continue to have this conversation and happy to do what the board wishes. So really no concern on my end there. Just trying to make sure we hear and gather as much information we can, bring it all to the table, and make the decision we feel is going to be in the best interest of all our students, all 5,500 we serve from pre-K through 26, and then bring it to the board for a vote, with either a yay, yes, we're going to do that, or a nay, do something different or bring more information. But again, the intent wasn't to solve all this in one night tonight. The intent wasn't to only cherry pick information we thought we'd want to bring, right? So we could have had all elementary, all middle school starting early, all high school starting at 7:00 to 10:15 or whatever. Again, there has to be a starting point, right? We can't just keep kicking the can down the road, so to speak, I hate to use that analogy. There has to be a starting point. We have a starting point. And, you know, you've given great feedback. I know Trustee Cook said, hey, feel free to send me more information, we're meeting again about this on Monday. We're meeting again about this on Monday. If we need to go out and survey, say, all right, we're going to survey, we're going to look at these eight different schedules and see what we think, or we need more information here. What is this about? Pat, you talked about, you know, different bus routes, you know? What is that going to mean to have a community stop? What does that look like at the elementary level? What does that look like at the middle school level? What does that look at the high school level? You know, James looking at, can we take middle school and high school and put them on one run? What if we do community stops and we say, all right, in your subdivision, you have four different stops, but you can sign up for the one you want? I mean, this is a huge, complex moving piece, pieces, or probably going to have to bring stuff back a couple of times for additional feedback and get additional information. And look for the things, what did we think about? What do we potentially overlook? So, it's not as robust as maybe everyone was looking for this evening. We'll be, again, more information that we'll gather and bring back to make sure we do the best we can.
Okay. Thank you, Pat. I know it's a big job, and I know that, you know, the process really started before you got here, so I appreciate that it's a difficult task for you and for administration to make all of this work. But I guess I was just a little confused because it looked like we were at a starting point further back than I thought we were. You know, hearing President Cohen read the, the board goals and that it was a recommendation of already for board members that that be a board goal 8:30 or later for middle and high school, I was just surprised to see that we were back to board feedback. I thought we had already done that. So, thank you.
No, because we haven't approved the board goals yet. I mean, we're working on that Monday. Fingers crossed we'll get those approved. My goals approved. Board goals in general approved. We get all that done, wrapped up Monday night. And if that's one of the district goals that are approved, then it's approved.
Okay. Thank you.
We have Howard, then John, Jonathan, then Michelle.
Thank you, President Cohen. This issue has been bantered about for a number of years, and I'm pleased that it's finally coming to the table. This is a very, and the reason why it's been kicking around for a while is this is a very complex issue because it affects the education of the students, the teachers' work time, after-school impact, parents' impact for latchkey, transportation issues, cost issues potentially. So, this really cannot be, or should not be looked at as just high school start time. We really have to see how the dominos all work together and fall. That, and really, a puzzle piece, I think, is a, is an excellent analogy because it is a big puzzle to see how this is all going to fit together. So, you know, this is not as simple as just, you know, the board makes a goal and it, and it happens because we really have to see all the other implications to see whether this, you know, by doing that, you know, if we squeeze the balloon on one side, you know, what actually pops out on the other? So, that's, that's the first thing. Second thing, Mr. Superintendent, I'm assuming that the thought is that we're looking, the target, if we do, if we do something, would be for the 21, 22 school year. Is that correct?
That is correct, Trustee Baron.
Okay. So, in order to make the timing for the 21, 22 school year, when would be the latest date that we as a board would need to make a decision?
I'm not able to answer that question right now on January 28th at 8:34 p.m.
Okay.
Because I didn't even know, I don't even know what the logistics are we're trying to make a decision on.
I, I understand, but I would request that you work with your team on the logistics side to see what is the drop dead date. Let's say it was April 1st. That way that we have a time, a time window, let's just, you know, you picking April 1st for as an example, for communication to the parents and, and changing bus routes and all the other things that would have to happen. That would mean that we basically have February, March, we have 60 days in order to do this. So, really laying out that window of, you know, if it's April 1st, May 1st, June 1st, whatever, it just gives us all a timeline as to when, because as Trustee Frost was going through, there are a number of different alternatives that we're going to be looking at, and then possibly other implications on, on sports, on clubs, on latchkey, on other things. So, we just need to make sure that we all collectively know that we need to make a decision by such and such a date, otherwise, I don't know whether we'd kick it to the second semester of 2021, 22, or the beginning of 22, 23. So, we, we just need to get from you some sort of endpoint in terms of when, when do we as an organization need to make a decision in order to be effective for the beginning of the next school year?
Well, I can definitely try to narrow it down. You know, that's an excellent point. But for sure, before the summer, so parents can make plans for next year because there's a change in time that's going to impact each parent in a different way. And so, they'll need to make adjustments, whether it's latchkey, whether it's daycare, whether it's, you know, my daughter skates, you know, with gems on ice, and now school's getting out later, so I need to pull her earlier, or now she can do this, or he can do that. So, definitely before the summer, but I'll try to narrow it down even more than that. And you write about a lot of the moving pieces, and it's kind of hard to, not difficult or hard, but as the times change, the constraints in other areas change. And so, we're trying to work on that. So, let's say the high school starts at 9:00. That's a different set of constraints in 8:30, 8:00, or 7:25. And then the different constraints for the other groups and the implications that are kind of there after we make that change.
I just thought as you were talking about two other things. One is, does this change, by changing the start time of high school, does that change the schedules, the scheduling that the assistant, assistant principals have to do? Because I know that's always a nightmare that has to be done with class choices and scheduling. So, are we just shifting by an hour, or does that throw a monkey wrench in the scheduling? And also, second question along kind of a similar line, is this something that we as a, a board and administration can make unilaterally? Or is this something that has to be negotiated with the BHEA?
Those are excellent questions. As far as working conditions, I'd have to look at the BHEA contract and see what it says about working conditions because this could be considered a change in working conditions. And then, there's another question before that, Trustee Baron, I forgot.
The scheduling, the high school schedules.
No, that, that won't make a difference.
Okay. But I, I think, so we, we need to find out from you all these different pieces that will be impacted so that when we get the final report, all those items are taken into consideration.
Correct.
And especially if Phil, if Phil has to be involved or if it not has. We definitely, whether it's, it's a negotiated issue or not, we definitely want to get the buy-in from the BHEA. We don't want to do this unilaterally at all. But at the same time, is this a negotiable issue and it really has to be done at the bargaining table?
Thank you.
Thanks, Howard. Jonathan, then Michelle, then Jennifer and Lisa. Jonathan?
Sure. Just a couple of concerns. Concern with the, with the integrity of the survey. I know we do our best to utilize the best survey technology, but I, I guess it's whoever wanted to respond, if you wanted to respond three times or four times, it's not, as a dead nerd, like I talked to you about it, that the integrity is just not there, you know? So, and then what, what that does is it further, my other concern is when we release this information about what the results of the survey were, and if the board takes action that is contrary to this, what I consider to be flawed survey, what is that going to say to the community? And the only other concern I had was, there was really no mention that if we do start the high school an hour later, that sports are all going to still start at the same time, and kids are going to have to get out of school early and miss their last hour, maybe hour and a half of school to go participate in some of these sports. It wasn't mentioned to say, would you, if we did this and your child had to do that, like, which would you prefer? Would you prefer the later start time, or would you prefer your child, you know? But that would also include missing time at the end of the school day if your child's involved in whatever activity needs to get out early. So, those are my two concerns, but, you know, we can work through all that.
Thank you. And a little bit about athletics, it's kind of a yes and no. Practices wouldn't start until the end of the school day. So, typically, a practice started at 2:45 under the current schedule. It wouldn't be 2:45 we're telling kids to go to practice. It would start at the end of the school day. Now, as far as games, games would most likely start at the same time. So, on a game day, you might be releasing people early. As a member of the Oakland Athletics Association, if we've got a girls' basketball game for JVA and JVB with a four o'clock start in Oxford and school gets out at 3:20, we're going to have to pull them early. There, there's no question about it. But there's no reason for our sponsored sports, we would need to pull them early out of the high school for the parents that are doing club volleyball, or club soccer, or gems on ice skating. I mean, parents have the ability to call their student in for an out pass anytime they want now. So, I mean, that would be something that probably would increase as part of that. But you're right, if the survey's not locked down, you know, and I'm on Twitter or Instagram, and I'm like, okay, everyone, fill this out 500 times, you know, it can definitely skew the data. There might be a way, if we do another survey, that we can lock it down so that you make it unique for each email address. So, whatever gets sent to you, the email address that you have on file is the only person that can answer it is associated with that email address. So, if you were to forward it to all your friends across the world saying, fill this out and mark B for number four, or whatever you do, they wouldn't be able to do that. It's unique just to you. That's something I think we might have the capability of doing.
Okay.
Anything else, Jonathan?
No, that's it.
Thanks, Jonathan. Michelle?
Some of the things I've said, that were said were some of the questions that I had. The first one definitely was dealing with sports. My question would be for travel, so for away games and being able to cover the bus transportation. If, if our day has ended, and now you've got to also consider the kids that just got out of school, so you've got to transport our athletes and possibly still have buses to cover the students that are getting out of school at the high school during that time. So, that's something we also need to make sure we're taking into consideration, having enough transportation availability for the kids that are getting out of school.
Correct.
The other implication, which was mentioned, was contracts for all of our staff. So, I definitely would encourage us to make sure that we are in communication with our unions regarding that. And the other question I had, and I just want some clarification, regarding the using community bus stops, you alluded to what it meant, but could you provide a little more clarity as to what you mean by community bus stops?
Sure. So, we would look at, for example, a subdivision, and there might be 30 stops, just give an example. I have no idea how many would be in the sub. And condensing it, so there's not as many stops. But then giving parents the opportunity to say, all right, here's where I live, there are four stops that are close by, I'm going to pick that stop because that's the way my son wants to walk, or he's going to pick up his two friends, or she's going to pick up her two friends on the way there. So, doing that would shorten the amount of time before runs, easing up the strain on the schedule. So, by not having as many times, the adjustment wouldn't be as much when we move the times, regardless of what they are. So, maybe going to 30 to 35 minutes between runs instead of 45 minutes between runs and capturing some of that. The good thing is, whatever is finally kind of brought forward at the end, all seven board members will continue to have opportunity to weigh in and see and think what's going on. And at the end, if you're like, wow, really great information, but no thanks, then, okay. I mean, that's, that's part of how it goes. Or you say, you know what? Yeah, that, that sounds like a good adjustment. We'll go with it.
I guess for me, we did this a few years ago, we would decrease the number of bus stops that were available for our kids, our children. We are a district with very few sidewalks. And for my, our elementary students that are already walking, you know, four or five houses down, and we have, you know, pretty, four or five houses is pretty far sometimes. So, now if we're going to increase that distance, I would be somewhat concerned for kid safety. So, if we could make sure we're also thinking about if it's four or five, now 10 houses down the block or around the corner, how far from that person's home are we asking an elementary young person to walk? Safety should definitely be considered when we're thinking about community stops as opposed to the current stops that we do have are already pretty significantly far away from our individual homes.
Agreed. We also talked about if we start too early with elementary, they're in the dark. If they get out too late, they're in the dark, but is it better to get out in the dark later in the afternoon, or later in the day, or is it in the morning? So, there's a lot of different scenarios that we're definitely looking at. Part of my job and the job of, you know, my team is to make sure we look at all the options. And so, community bus stops are definitely an option. And the board might say, you know what? Yeah, I, I see why it makes sense, it saves time, but with our community, with walking between homes, with how long the fact that there aren't sidewalks, so they're in the street, really not interested in that. We want to have the additional stops that we currently have. We want to keep that model. That's a priority. Whatever we do at the times, that is a priority we feel for our community. Great. That's one less constraint as we're looking to move things through. That saves a ton of time. That saves a lot of hours in the day. So, no worries. But we want to look at everything, consider everything. No idea is a bad idea until you really know it's a bad idea.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure I knew what that meant. Thank you.
Sure. Very welcome. Thank you.
I know, I know Jennifer and Lisa, but Jennifer, I have a question, maybe for you for the meeting on the first, and I don't know if you know the answer, or Pat knows the answer. I know Birmingham has switched to 8:15. I don't know what they did in terms of impacting their elementary and middle schools in terms of times for the, for the high school. And we probably don't know now, but maybe you could find out, you know, prior to your 2-1 meeting and just send a notice. But I'm just curious what they did with the, with elementary and middle school, because I know they're starting 8:15, I think in the hybrid method for high school. That's my understanding.
I can find out.
Okay. Jennifer?
Oh, just, yeah, real quick, and sorry if I missed you saying this, Pat. Is BIC when we're going to see the, and don't get nervous, John, because I understand data plus two, but is Monday when we're going to see the survey results, or how long will that take to collate?
I believe they'll be ready to go Monday and possibly even in the board update tomorrow. That I'm not sure of, but they'll be ready to go Monday.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thanks. Lisa?
Okay. Paul, my understanding is Birmingham is 8:15 just for the hybrid because of the flexibility with the hybrid schedule. They haven't made a permanent change in start time. Also, I want to, you know, just sort of reiterate what John said about the reliability of the survey. I would have liked to have seen it have an option with different elementary times, not just later ones, but earlier ones as well. I mean, we've gotten some feedback already about people interested in having earlier start time for elementary. So, curious if we are going to use survey data, maybe, maybe we need to include that. In my mind, I'm not really sure, you know, if we're doing, making a change for health-related reasons, I, I don't really know why we gear from the CDC. And that's really why I put my question up is, I guess maybe it's for Howard because what you said, Howard, about there being a balloon and, you know, nothing in a vacuum, and I understood from your district goals that you, Jennifer, Seba, and Paul had already done the research and, and made the recommendation to adapt the goal of 8:30 or later. Is that not the case? Why was it on the list of goals then?
Howard, I guess that a question?
Who do you want to answer, Lisa?
Or Paul, or Seba, or Jennifer, anyone. I mean, I'm just curious if that wasn't the intention.
It was, it was my intention when I wrote that to, to have it say, American Academy of Pediatrics recommendation. That was my intention.
Yeah, I mean, and I liked that.
And well, well... And well, well, yeah, so I think we have to hammer that out on Monday.
And, and just, just to clarify, just to clarify, uh, you know, um, Jennifer, Seba and Howard drafted goals as a starting point for a discussion, um, which, you know, we had additional discussion. We're going to have additional discussion on the first. You know, I know I tweaked it for, you know, to the original point that we're going to be discussing it, not implement, you know? So I think we're going to have more discussion on it. So, you know, and that's, that's the goal on the meeting on the first.
A- and I, I'd have to look at the wording on the goals, but no goal is ever an edict saying, we must do this. We need to examine something. We might, you know, prefer something, but if there are logistical reasons for not doing something, that it's not to say that, you know, you know, that we will, we will do something hella con- to, uh, to hell of high water, you know, that's, no, you.
No, I agree.
We have to get, we have to get feedback. We have to get feedback from the organization. We have to get feedback from the parents. We have to get feedback from the, from the, the teachers. And if it's not the right decision, then it's not the right decision.
Yes. I, whi- which I understand and I appreciate in that, um, I, and agree with a hundred percent. That's why I was asking for you, Howard or, or Paul or anyone. Uh, what has changed your opinion in the last couple of days that that's no longer the recommendation? Because maybe I'm just not privy to any of the information we have so far.
I, I, I think you're reading a lot more into it than, I, again, I have to look at the wording, but obviously this has been the preference from everyone, not only society, but also the, the, the district to move in this direction. But now we're getting into the, the brass tacks of actually looking at all the logistics and what the pros and cons are, what, what the, what the indications are.
Pat, you have your hand up. Pat?
Yeah. Trustee, uh, Gemmer, I forgot to mention one thing. With the surveys, we do collect the IP address. So we can kind of go through if we need be and see if there is bail stuffing. So if you'll send me your IP address, I want to see how many you filled out, sir. And how you voted.
I think we can discuss this, like the details of this on Monday and, and kind of, uh, I mean, yeah, let's, let's move forward. I, I, I think we all agree that the CDC recommendation is a good recommendation. However, I would think we agree with Howard as well that just operating in that vacuum is not necessarily the way that we're going to work. But today's not the, the time for this, I don't.
Yeah, I think, I think getting, and one second, uh, Pat. Uh, yeah, I think the point, uh, Jennifer raises at the beginning, they're having a meeting on February 1st. If we have additional questions or things they want to explore, just send Jennifer an email as chair of. Make sure it gets on the agenda and they'll discuss it. Pat?
And just for a reminder, uh, just a reminder, the survey was created and sent out before we had the discussion of board goals. So there would have been of no way of us knowing that that was going to be a board goal that was discussed.
Okay. With that, um, we will move now.
Paul, if I could just make one very brief, one sentence comment. Realize that by sending a, a survey out, that is not a statistically valid survey. As John was pointing out, what we, if we're going to do is, if we do a real survey, we would need to do random calls to people based upon, you know, different grade levels and get their responses, whether they, um, basically want to respond or not. We really need to get their voices because otherwise you're going to get the squeaky wheel. It is going to get the grease and the people who are very active, um, are going to answer the survey. And the people who are, you know, don't have the time, might, might have a very definite opinion, but they're not going to fill out the survey. So we, we, we would need to do some sort of statistical analysis or su- survey to make sure it's really valid.
Okay. All right. Thanks Superintendent Watson for starting the discussion. There'll be more in the upcoming weeks. With that, we'll go to F extended, uh, learning plan. Pat?
Sure. Thank you, President Cullen. So there are no material changes to report from January 2021. This routine agenda item is posted in accordance with the Senate Return to Learn bill package every 30 days. The extended continuity of learning plan was originally presented and approved by the Board of Education on September 24th, 2020. It is posted monthly to SEPI and on the district's website in accordance with transparency reported requirements mandated by the state following each month's board action.
Thanks, Pat. Any comments, questions? Okay. With that, we will go to board business. Uh, we can, uh, extended learning plan. Can I get a motion? Anyone? Jennifer?
Yeah, I, sorry. It's, I move the Board of Education reconfirm the Bloomfield Hills School's extended continuity of learning plan as mandated monthly by the Senate Return to Learn bill package and as presented by the administration to include the application of metrics to the document approved by the Board of Education on December 17th, 2020 and September 24th, 2020 respectively.
Do I get support?
Support.
Uh, any discussion? Okay, Howard?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
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 I mean, yes, Seba?
Yes.
Motion passes seven oh. Uh, 10B to move one of our board meetings, um, so we can attend the multicultural event. Um, can I get a motion?
I move the May regular meeting of the Board of Education be rescheduled to Wednesday, the 26th of May due to district-wide multicultural celebration on Thursday, the 27th of May and that the revised calendar be approved as presented.
Do I have support? Howard?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
I mean, yes, Seba?
Yes.
Motion passes seven oh. Uh, 10C, can I get a motion?
Sure. Um, I move that the Board of Education adopt the recommendation of the state regarding virtual public comment and mirror as closely as possible in-person practice by requiring public comment to be made virtually during the prescribed meeting time only.
Do I have support?
Support.
Any discussion?
Can we just, uh, kind of go through a little bit of what this, um, would change versus what we've been doing over the last, uh, six months or so?
Sure. This would change, um, to be in line with, uh, pretty much every other, um, district in Oakland County uh, in terms of if someone wants to come into public comment while we're still virtual, they would have to be invited into the meeting. Sort of at the beginning, there were a couple of people that came in the meeting, gave their public comment as opposed to the written comments, which we've used. And we're the last, probably one of the last districts, definitely in Oakland County, if not the last one that still allows that. So someone would have to invite themselves into the meeting to give public comment.
So does that mean that will, will we be reading public comment anymore?
No, we won't be reading public comment anymore.
Got it.
And, and again, this, we're one of the last districts that still does that. So be in line with, with all the other districts that have changed over, um, before us.
So, so, so we will, so in the, over the last number of months, we've put a spreadsheet out. The, the, uh, the public has typed a public comment into the spreadsheet and then you have read it. That whole process will go away and all we will do is, um, what David did at the beginning of this meeting, which is, you know, people will still sign up for public comment, uh, but not put their text in the, the public comment boxes and they will, uh, just be called on one by one.
Correct. Yes.
Very good. Okay.
Motion second, you can vote. Howard?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
I mean, yes, Seba?
Seba, you're on mute? Still on mute.
Sorry, that was a yes.
Okay. Motion passes seven oh. Call for adjournment. Adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night. Good weekend.
Bye-bye. Thank you.